Good evening, welcome and thank you for being here tonight. I call this meeting of Montgomery County School Board to order at 7:01 on August 1st, 2017. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next item is the adoption of our agenda. May I have a motion to adopt our agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Next item is the electronic meeting participation. Mr. Chabaka has asked to participate electronically tonight. Since he's out of town, may I have a motion to approve his electronic participation?
So moved?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is Dr. Meyer's announcements.
Alright, thank you. Well, it's about time to get things started. New teachers came back today and had a great first day with our new teachers and it was good to see them, the other teachers come back on Thursday. And so it is time to get things started, of course, students next week. I wanted to remind you, opening session will be held on Monday at 8:30 at Blacksburg High School. The breakfast will start at 7:15 if you'd like to participate in that and hope all of you are able to attend it if at all possible. Also excited, this coming school year, we will have students who will be school board reps. And at the meeting on August 15th, which will be at Christiansburg High School, the student reps will be there and we'll introduce them and Ms. Drake will show them around the block, show them how things work and help them out and help them understand our procedures. Our first meeting, we're going to alternate two at a time at our meeting, so the first meeting where two of the participants will be here will be September 5th. And so real excited about having student reps on the school board to represent the communities and the schools. We continue to prepare for the solar eclipse on August 21st and we had discussed at the last meeting about delaying the dismissal. You know, after looking at it, it's creating a host of complications for us and for parents on that day. Every student in the division, as we discussed, will receive glasses to view the eclipse and all of our schools are participating in educational activities surrounding the eclipse. My biggest concern in terms of dismissals would be the elementary school students. But the good thing is they actually will be dismissing towards the end of the eclipse. And I feel better that it's not the other way around where elementary is dismissing first right in the middle and so I feel more confident that our middle and high schoolers can handle some direction prior to them going home. So for this reason, I believe we just should keep the schedule as is. If you have any other thoughts about that during, I guess, old business or your thoughts later, if you don't want to go with that and still want us to consider some type of change in schedule, I look forward to hearing your thoughts there. Next, COP Sync is up and running. We tested it for the first time yesterday. We ran drills at three of our schools and it went real well. And if you remember, COP Sync is the instant notification to the law enforcement. Basically, a teacher can hit a button and it goes to the closest five police officers in proximity to the school. In other words, it bypasses 911. And so the police officers get an immediate alert to show up at the school. And it was really, in fact, I got the alert all three times now in here at the central office and it actually brings up a sort of a discussion chat window where you can actually talk through text in it. And so I think it will be a great tool that we hope we will never need. Something I'd like to let everyone know is something that we plan to do this either November or December. We're looking at an actual testing date. As you know, I went to Finland this summer and Finland is ranked as one of the top educational systems in the world. And you know, we always wonder, how do we know that? Well, it's a test called the PISA test. The PISA is an international test and many American, United States, kids here in the United States take that test and see how they stack up against the world. And of course, the United States hasn't done real well. I like to see how our students will do. And actually, looking at making one of our high schools a pilot site. And basically, you give it to 15-year-old students and so we will see how that goes. So I'm excited about that and see how we compare to the rest of the United States and the world in terms of education. It's a two-hour test to test kids in science, reading, and math. And so that will be interesting to see what happens.
What's the timeframe for the test?
November, December. That's what we're looking at, actually administering the test towards the end of the first semester. So excited to announce that we've worked with the local health department to offer immunizations to our schools this year. In fact, they'll be starting at Price's Fork Elementary School at the back-to-school night. And so we're hoping to expand the immunizations throughout most all of our schools, especially during flu season. And these, from my understanding, will be free immunizations for our students. And so real excited about that. So just a few good things happening prior to the beginning of school here. And you know, also, I think football may have started last Thursday, other sports started yesterday. Fall sports have started and also a band started last week. And so we have about, folks ask, why do we start school so early? Well, about 30 to 40 percent of our high schools are already back in school right now. And so, and they're working on their extracurricular activities, I guess. And that's it for now.
Sound good. Thank you. Next item is our awards and recognitions.
Yes.
Again, Dr. Meyer.
Okay, so Dr. Graham, if you'll come up to the podium to assist us.
This is an exciting time of the night and if, Annie Whitaker, our Director of Human Resources, will come forward. We have two recognitions tonight. The first recognition is for our Support Staff Employees of the Year. Ms. Whitaker?
Thank you very much. Tonight, we would like to recognize our Support Staff Employees of the Year, so we're going to ask that they go ahead and stand and follow us down the aisle this way. And as they get ready, I'll read their names. I would like to take just a second to note the importance of our Support Staff in our school division. Without these individuals in our schools, it would be impossible for us to function. And I think it's really important that we recognize each of these job groups and each of these individuals because they play essential roles in our schools and are extremely important to our children and our teachers. So what we'll do today, we do have other individuals who were not able to be here today, but we'll read today the names of those individuals who are here and then we'll also recognize the individual who want to support staff member for the school division. First, we have Geneva Basham. Geneva is a cafeteria manager at Eastern Montgomery High School and she's been with Montgomery County Schools for 26 years. Next is Phyllis Bauer. Phyllis is a cafeteria manager at Christiansburg Primary School and she's been with Montgomery County for 10 years. Carmen Chaney, Special Education Aid at Christiansburg Elementary School, has been with Montgomery County for three years. Actually, it's four. Next is Melody Cox, Administrative Assistant at Christiansburg Elementary School, who has been with us for three years. Cherry East, Cafeteria Manager at Falling Branch Elementary School, has been with Montgomery County for 23 years. Rhonda Gore, Cafeteria Manager at Blacksburg Middle School, has been with Montgomery County for 18 years. Kelly Hager is representing Price's Fork Elementary School. Kelly's now serving as our Lead Nurse and has been with us for 18 years. Patricia Hall, School Nurse at Blacksburg High School, has been with Montgomery County for eight years. Melissa Lester is a Clerical Aid at Auburn Elementary School and has been with Montgomery County for 15 years. Linda Stone King is a Cafeteria Manager at Bellevue Elementary School and she's been with us for 15 years. Millie Weaver is a Cafeteria Employee at Montgomery Central and has been with Montgomery County for eight years. Beverly Wimmer is a Cafeteria Manager at Auburn High School and has been with Montgomery County for two years. Twenty. I lost a zero, twenty years. And a five, 25. Maybe I need to take that math test.
I thought, wait a minute, now something ain't right.
There we go. I apologize.
Do it forever.
Sorry, Beverly. And lastly, I'd like to introduce to you Rhonda Cromer, an Administrative Assistant at Gilbert-Lincoln Elementary School. Rhonda has been with us for 18 years. I'd like to read just a little bit about Rhonda. Come on up and let's make her blush for a minute. There we go. Rhonda's principal stated, "Rhonda truly represents the heart and soul of the Gilbert-Lincoln community. She's an active leader in the MCPS Administrative Assistant Association and always has a smile and kind words for students, staff, family, and division employees." Her coworker stated, "Rhonda is the go-to person at Gilbert-Lincoln Elementary School and never meets a stranger. Rhonda is a valuable asset to MCPS and we are honored to present this award to her. Thank you for everything that you do." And thank you to each of our people tonight for all of the work you do. You guys can go ahead and come up and we'll get a picture of everybody all together. Oh, you want to get them in the seats?
I'm in.
Okay.
Right, it's gonna be awesome. You are gonna go right here from there. And yeah, absolutely.
We got squished together.
Stand on up, girl.
You gotta work, Abby. And that's fitting.
Okay, now look at me, one, two, three. Perfect, thank you. One more. This way I won't have the computer in it. Yeah, of course. Of course. Alright, one, two, three. And then Rhonda, Dr. Meyer, Ms. Karan, if you can move over here, we're gonna do a great room of all you guys.
Yes.
So at this time, our Director of Nutrition, Michael Marsinelli, will join us and present the next awards, which are the next award, which is the Virginia Breakfast Challenge.
I was told to be scripted, so I'll keep it short. As everyone knows, I can talk about my program forever. Congratulations, all of you. Chairman Karan, Dr. Meyer, members of the board. Schools across the Commonwealth competed for prizes and recognition by increasing participation in their school breakfast programs. School divisions of similar enrollment size competed against each other in one of four different categories. Virginia recognized a total of 16 winners across the state, with 12 school winners and four school division winners. Montgomery County was designated a gala. They used apples. But they were a gala school division, which means we were part of the group which is of the second highest number of enrollees or students. This group of schools, they were awarded, excuse me, the award was earned for the greatest participation growth over one year due to the successful implementation of Eastern Montgomery High School's grab-and-go and second-chance alternative breakfast models. This award compliments the entire school, recognizing the SNP staff, the integral support and cooperation of the faculty, and the leadership of the school administrators, Mr. Danny Knott and Mr. Andrew Hippel. Because without their support, we would not have been able to accomplish this. It is my honor to introduce Ms. Geneva Basham, our School Nutrition Program Manager, Ms. Charlotte Phoenix, and Ms. Hope Rakes. There are only three of them doing that job down there. For their dedication and hard work, which resulted in the largest statewide increase in the number of healthy breakfasts served to students over the past year. Please join. Love. Thank you.
Oh, us again? One, two, three. Great, thank you so much.
At this time, we'll take a five-minute break so that all the board members may congratulate those who received honors tonight.
Address at this time and at each our regularly scheduled meeting, the school board sets aside up the 30 minutes for citizens to address the board pertaining public education issues. Each speaker is allowed a three minutes to speak and the screen's around the room and the laptop will indicate when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when the three minutes has passed. I do not have any individuals sign up. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the board at this time? Come forward and state your name and address, please.
Crystal Finnis, 395 Summit Ridge Road, Christiansburg, Virginia. I'm here on behalf of the MCA and we'd like to say thank you for work past done and look forward to working with you this future and we are very glad to have you such a supportive school board. So thank you very much. We look forward to a great year.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board at this time? If not, public address is closed. Next one is our Consent Agenda Items. If there's nothing to be pulled from the agenda, we'll consider it approved. Is there any questions regarding the Consent Agenda Items? Hearing none, we approve the consent agenda as it is. The next item is payment of our bills. May I have a motion to pay our bills?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion regarding our bills? None? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Is that a delay on the opposed or the?
Good to hear your voice, Mr. Chabaka. And next item is our Business Meeting and our Board Member Reports. Board Members, any board member would like to share or they have a report?
I can start.
Sure.
So we have the Summer Graduation, which was fewer children, students than it was last year. They're not children anymore, really. But it was exciting to see what they're going to do and what their goals are and it was actually nice because there were so few of them, they were able to give a little bio about them and I really enjoyed hearing what their aspirations are after public school. Connie and I, Ms. Froggett and I, also attended the VSBA Educational Conference and it was very helpful, especially with, you know, the balanced literacy that's being implemented, well, has been in place for a long time. But I know, you know, it's really being consistently implemented across the school system. And what was interesting was this one session that I attended, which was how to deal with memory attention, well, or just attention in general. They quoted a University of Texas study that was done in 1976 and that people in general have about a 10 to 18-minute time period where you can still get their attention, but after that, you pretty much lose it. So you either need to take a break, do a joke, or do an activity, or stop for teachers and check for learning and not just say how many people got it right, but actually go around and see how the students did. But what I thought was interesting about the University of Texas study was that they did that same study again after people are on their cell phones and social media. And you know what? The attention timeframe did not change. It's still in the 10 to 18-minute range. Now, of course, this is, you know, for an average adult. But applying it to children, it was, again, you know, after that timeframe, move to a new, you know, do an activity that reinforces what you just talked about so that it starts to move from their short-term memory to their long-term memory. Because once they do an activity, it will then stick with them. So I thought that was interesting, especially, you know, given the balanced literacy and how that works in sections and then, you know, you do an activity to reinforce that, what you just learned. So it was really, really good to hear that. The other thing I went to, just out of curiosity, and Mr. Weaver isn't here, but was the workplace readiness. And it was what people are doing, which is actually very, very similar to ours, but one thing they had implemented was they did a, I don't want to say Career Day, but it's kind of like a Career Day, but the students went and did an interview. So businesses participated and they interviewed students so that they could get used to what an interview would be like. So, you know, in prep, roll back, the teachers would help them, you know, get their resume together and their cover letter, a lot like the DECA program does and the marketing programs in the high school. And then they get, you know, some advice on interviewing. They also had, they're also required to take two workshops and one of those workshops could be, you know, how do you dress for an interview? What is your, what is the right term for it? What is your conversation opener? You know, try to sell yourself. You know, what should you say in the first two minutes to sell yourself? So I thought that was really interesting. They did, and they did make a point, I thought this was funny. The first year, they did it in the spring. They found out that the teachers were very upset with them because it hit SOL time. So they now know to do it in the fall. They did 500 students from 15 high schools and they had 40 businesses there with two reps. So it was just a during-the-day type of thing. They, you know, brought the children in, the students in, and did the interviews and then the next, you know, group would come. So anyway, I just wanted to add that because a lot of what they also talked about was things, were things we are already doing as far as getting, you know, internships and apprenticeships and job shadowing in place for our students. And then the last and final thing I wanted to mention is we actually are doing immunizations a little early at Price's Fork because for our second year, we got the grant to do the Giving Roots Program. So tomorrow, all the kindergarten and preschoolers will come in and meet their teacher from 2:00 to 4:00. They'll get haircuts if they need them. They'll get immunizations if they need them. They'll sign up for their birth certificates if we don't already, if the school system doesn't already have them. There's activities for the students to play and face painting and a big blow-up to play in and it's just really a great, a great time for parents to feel welcome and get those kindergartners or pre-K in to, you know, get them used to it before the big day. So I'm very excited about that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Since you went to the same conference, do you want to go second?
Sure. A couple of things that I did at the conference, though. One thing, and I know it's going to be a little hard for you to see, but I went to a talk on Discovery Elementary School, which is in Arlington. And I don't know if you can tell from there, but this school is covered in solar panels. And this, which actually did not add a lot of cost to the building and will pay for itself in 10 years or less. And not only is this a zero-energy school, but they are at times selling back this energy. And so I just bring this up as, you know, as we are looking forward, building, renovating buildings, adding new spaces, that this is something, it's clearly coming and we need to start looking at it. And are the counties talking about a solar farm? But, you know, why take up land when you can put it in places like on top of your buildings? And another place I've seen it used very effectively was at Cincinnati Zoo, where they covered their parking area. So nothing like having nice covered parking that's also providing energy at the same time. So something to think about going forward. I did also, the other really fascinating thing I intended was about coding in elementary school. And this particular school system, it's Isle of Wight County, they now teach coding every week, just like a specialty, the way you go to music and guidance and library and PE. They now teach coding, starting in kindergarten. And it's been very successful and now as the kids are aging up, they're moving it into middle school. They already had it in high school, a lot of, you know, we code in high school already, but they're finding the benefits of starting this at a very early age. And so it was really impressive and, you know, the big expense, of course, is teachers, but in terms of curriculum, they got all of that from code.org. So again, you know, we talk about, we are ahead in a lot of areas. This is one area where we need to be looking to move ahead even more. I visited a talk on Jason Learning, which is a science curriculum. And I did bring home, it's a recycling contest that I'll pass on to Ms. Drake that she could send out on Peach Star that our kids could definitely participate in. And kind of ties in with what Ms. Graham said. I went to one on kinesthetic learning and again, the importance of activity and movement when learning, whether it be stopping between lessons or whether it be moving during them. And of course, they had, you know, the bouncy chairs and things, but they had little foot pedals that the kids could just sit there and pedal while they're, you know, while they're sitting there. They can be pedaling. This is great for kids who like to fidget in particular. So that was another good takeaway from that. And the other announcement I wanted to make is the Montgomery County Educational Foundation Grant Cycle officially opens with our all-county opening on Monday. But since you're here tonight, it's actually live on the website, minus a few typos I need to fix tonight. So if you want to get a head start, it's on there, it is open and all the information is on there that you need. And we look forward to another year. We've had a really good year. We've had a really good year. And last year we gave out over twenty-three thousand. We have designated at least twenty, but we think will probably exceed last year's as well. So start working on those grants.
Thank you. Any other board members who would like to, would you like to share our adventures?
Oh, absolutely.
We had a great trip to Richmond. And I'll let you speak on.
So we went to the classrooms, not courtrooms, conference in Richmond, along with several other folks from the district. And it was absolutely wonderful. You know, I have to say, after the last board meeting, I was feeling quite discouraged, frustrated, beat up, just not feeling good at all about how we are approaching making sure that we are educating all of our children at the highest level. And this conference re-engaged me, okay? But it also opened my eyes to, over the last eighteen years, well, we'll say less than eighteen years, some of the decisions around discipline that I had been a part of as to not necessarily such a good thing. I'll just say not necessarily is not quite it, just was not some good decisions because you just didn't know better. So my thing is in life, you know better, you do better.
Exactly.
I was thinking of Dr. Meyer with his insistence to the board that we do something different along discipline and the board's role in that. And I'm grateful because I would have been feeling a whole lot worse because it would have added another year of, quite frankly, some mistakes. This conference reaffirmed everything that I've been saying, okay? It, it highlighted the disparity for African-American children, especially African-American males. It was just, you know, I'm sitting there and there were a couple of folks throughout the state who understood my frustration over the years. And I got some text messages going, you just got affirmed, you just got affirmed, right? There needs to be some changes, possibly to policies. Because when we're talking about what's going on in our school district, I have watched over four superintendents, not just what's happening with African-American students or not happening, but all things, you know. There's emphasis put on this, and then it goes away because there's not so much energy around the next superintendent. And then things go this way and that way. And that's what has happened with, in relations to what we're doing as far, as far as educating our African-American children and children with disadvantaged, and it needs to stop. And the way we stop that waning is with how we look at our policies, right? And how we're holding folks accountable. Yeah, it is very difficult to have a conversation with folks about biases and cultural competency. But everyone who spoke, every workshop that I went to, those were the things that were being emphasized that make the change. Dr. John Marshall, Marshall from Louisville, Kentucky, the Jackson County Public Schools, is the Chief Equity Officer. Now, I have the privilege of knowing another chief equity officer in Oakland, California. And this may be something that we need to look at in this county at some level to ba- basically make sure we're doing the right thing for all children as we look at our policies, as we look at where our budget is. Because you follow the money, and I say that with many things. Follow the money and that shows you where people, you know, what they think is important, right? I don't want to go into a, or I could, but I don't want to go into a whole lot of detail with this. But as we were at the conference and sitting there, it was very apparent to me that this is a presentation that needs to be made to this board. So that everyone understands the importance of why I keep beating this, beating this, and will continue to beat this, even if I'm no longer on this board. As long as I can beat something, I'm going to keep beating this one. So we want to do a presentation to the board, okay, about this. Because I can't do justice here in a few minutes because we have other business to do. But I'll, I'll just say it was, it was amazing to hear, yep, you were put on this board. Because I believe, you know, may have been votes that actually put me here, but the good Lord said, this is where you need to be to make sure you're taking care of children. And that's what I planned to do. So it just helped me tremendously in, in many different ways. So I'll just stop and let you all know this conference is, this pleasant, presentation is coming. And there may even be something at the state level to help us as board members understand how we need to proceed as far as making sure we're serving all children, okay? I just appreciate the opportunity so much. It was well worth, well worth the time.
Can I respond quickly to something Ms. Franklin just said? I agree a hundred percent with everything you're saying. And, you know, and this is something I haven't shared with a few folks yet, it's a great time to do it, perfect timing. But we've already discussed as an instructional team, we've looked at our S O L preliminary results. And one thing I wanted to look at was our achievement gap between black students and all students. And we haven't gotten any better. We're, we're still at about twelve to fourteen percent in terms of achievement level between our black students and other students. And so, you know, we need to do something about that. And so here, the first thing we're going to do this year, and we're already working on it, is our, is Ms. Wickham and Mr. Polly have already, they're talking, in the process of talking to principals now. But we're in the process, in fact, just had a conversation with Mr. Polly about two hours ago. We're pulling the data on every African-American student in the division that has not been successful on S O L testing and also pulling other data points. And we're going to have an individual plan for each one of those students this school year. And we're going to talk about it. And, you know, principals are going to be talking to teachers about it and about those individual students. But I think the first thing you have to do, if you want to solve that problem, you have to focus on individuals and individual students who are not being successful. And so we're going to focus on African-American students in our school division that are not being successful. And we're going to have an individual plan for each one of those students, to work with those students individually. And so I'm real excited about that. And because I'm, I'm determined, we're going to, we're going to get better there because it's an area that we, we need to get better at. And, and you're not going to, you're not going to do it unless you're intentional about it. And we haven't been intentional about it. And, you know, we've done great things in the classrooms, our test scores have come up. Our, you know, we have, you know, most of our schools are fully accredited. But, but looking at data over the past few years, we're pretty flat-lined. We're accredited, you know, we got great scores compared to other school divisions. But to get a little better, we got to start looking at individual students. And, you know, and that's, that's what we have to do. And so we're going to have individual plans for every African-American student who's not being successful in our school division this year, period. And so I'm, I'm excited to see where that goes. But we're, we'll be having a lot of conversations with principals who will then be having conversations with those individual students that are in their classroom and figuring out what can we do extra and what resources do they need to help those students? And, you know, and, and so I'm, I'm real excited about that. We'll talk more as we go and I'll let you know the progress in that as we move forward. And, and so.
I'm going to have to respond to that. Great, that worked because I've been asking for years. If you have three African-American students in your school and yours, they're not being successful, how come, okay? So this will help address that. But it also comes across as, let's fix the students instead of maybe let's do something to change the system. One, so that we don't have to address individual students. The, one of the most powerful things that I heard, and I'll never refer to a system as being broken, that is not serving folks, is if the system is in, is doing exactly what it's supposed to do, then it's not broken. So if it's, if you're getting the same results with the same things, I am not insane. Some people may say I'm crazy, but I am not insane. So for us to keep doing the same thing, getting the same results, which is those gaps aren't narrowing, those scores aren't going up at the rate they should be going up, we need to be doing something different. So great plans.
Absolutely.
So I, I can't wait to get, for us to get the presentation.
Absolutely. And it's challenging teachers to do something different for, for individual students. And, you know, and saying, hey, what are you doing? And how, you know, how, how are we going to move these, these individual specific students forward? You know, something else too that we've discussed, and, and in fact, at our opening ceremony this coming Monday, I'll, I'll discuss this with all of our teachers across the school division, is we're looking at the, of course, the Department of Education wants us to implement the five Cs. And, you know, collaboration, communication, creativity, critical thinking. And the last one is one that I really want us to, the five Cs, we want, as we're doing curriculum meetings this year, to focus on the five Cs. How's that, what's going on in classrooms? The last one is citizenship. And part of citizenship, I believe, the term that we're going to use is cultural citizenship. You know, what does that look like? To make sure that we, that in all of our classrooms across the, the division, that we are paying attention to cultural diversity in our courses and how they're being taught. Making sure that there's literature representing all of our students in those classrooms, that our libraries have certain pieces of literature in those, in our libraries that kids can go and feel like they have a connection to that. And, but I believe in every single course that's taught in, in Montgomery County, you know, we need to pay attention to, to the, the cultural citizenship piece of it. And that is, and I think that's through engagement too. But, but we have to be intentional about that too. And I think that's where your, you know, the, the diversity can be, can be appreciated within that actual piece. And so, so I'm excited in how we're, we're moving forward with that as well. But because you just mentioned something, something deeper needs to occur. I think that's the deeper piece. I think that, you know, you know, the, the understanding of each other. Because that's the, the reason the Department of Education is implementing the five Cs. Those are the things, those are the skills that will help folks be successful beyond high school. It's not necessarily the content we teach at times, but it's the ability to work with folks from different backgrounds, different cultures, different races, different, that are just, that are different and having those understandings about each other. So, so I don't know one hundred percent what that looks like, but we're going to work on it. And, and, but the, the cultural citizenship is something that we really want to, to make sure that our, that it's hap- you know, it's happening to some level in pockets and different courses across the division. But we want to make sure, you know, it's happening everywhere. And so, but yep, so thank you, Ms. Franklin.
Definitely, it was a very powerful conference. And, you know, as I listened, took notes, and I'm like writing. But I thought about Ms. Franklin and I thought about, like, she said this before, you know. All the things mentioned, I've heard from you before, most of the things, definitely. And, and I have just, I just took, you know, bullet points. And one of them was stop saying system is broken. The other one is hire diverse teacher staff, which we have, we are doing very well. We have efforts to that. Buy library books that represent the student bodies, like you mentioned. Look into your code of conduct, definition of defiance, definition of disruption, you know, how we discipline them. Because it's such a big spectrum. What you, for somebody be defiant, could be something simple for some other teacher, could be totally different. Listen to kids. I think that's why I'm excited about student representatives. And hopefully they will, you know, carry to the student body in their schools. And we will have diverse student representatives as well, so we can hear from them. I think that will, that will be good, that was the biggest thing. And then community conversations, I think that needs to be happening. And working with higher ed, teacher training and how higher education actually emphasizing those. And of course, cultural competency in the curriculum as well as P D. So those were the bullet points. And, you know, some of them we're doing well, some of them we're about to do well. So we are definitely like to, you know, like to present this to the board. So we will all hear the same thing. Oh, let's see. Another two little conferences I did, one was School Law Conference in June. Basically, it was recap of federal school board legislative issues, general assembly update, and new grievance regulations. And then also, there was a big emphasis on website accessibility by individuals that cannot see and hear. So that was interesting, that is going to be pretty much requirement in the coming years. I think that we will have a website that individuals can have, have an access without seeing and hearing. So that was interesting. The other one, I represented Blue Ridge Region on the V S B A's Legislative Committee. That is basically what happens is divisions submit some legislative positions that they think important for them. Some of them new or some of them it's amendments that existed legislative positions. And then those school divisions comes and presents that to the legislative, V S B A Legislative Committee. And, and then the committee decides accepting or rejecting. And then all those goes to V S B A Board of Directors in August. And then they approve or disapprove. And then all comes to V S B A Annual Meeting when the delegate assembly delegates say yea or nay. So that was interesting. There were, I think, twelve, you know, amendments and new positions. And the committee probably accept most of them, except few. So it was an interesting procedure for me to set the rope up. So that's all I did. Ms. Bond, you were not?
I wasn't near as busy as you guys were, but. I did attend the summer school graduation. I was there too, and it was a little group, but it was nice, it was great.
Take your hand off for a second, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm having a really, really hard time hearing much of anything that's going on. Is there any way to reposition whatever device is being used?
I may have to yell out.
And if it doesn't improve very much, I, I don't want to get in the way of the meeting. I, I may just drop off. It's kind of hard to participate when I can't hear.
I, I had the same problem the last time I phoned in, yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to.
It doesn't work well.
Probably. Speak louder.
FaceTime works much better.
Yeah, FaceTime is. Sorry, Mr. Chabaco.
Do you want to finish or not?
Sure, please go ahead. I'm sorry to keep you hanging.
I was just going to say, I wanted to highlight on, Dr. Meyer had mentioned last meeting about a luncheon that we had shared with a gentleman that, I'm on the C T E Board with Rick Weaver. And this gentleman was the chair of that group. And he was just really, really frustrated because he couldn't seem to get Montgomery County students involved in his steam fitting program. Because it, a lot of times it doesn't seem like, I know that we require students to take career and technical education, but it just doesn't seem like the ones that have the love for it are really moving into that because everybody's pushing the, you know, the college route, you've got to have college route. You've, you know, and even parents are piggybacking on that. If you don't go to college, you're just not going to do anything, you're not going to be anything, you're not going to make anything. And, and I know that to be true, that is happening. And so he also felt that sentiment. So I asked Dr. Meyer to have lunch with he and I. And so he could tell him about what his interests are. He is a graduate from Auburn. He never had children, but he has a huge steam fitting business. And he does partnerships and different things like that. He brings students in, you know, teaches them hands-on. Most people that are involved in career and technical education, you know, even though we do career workshops, and I think that's great, they're going and saying, okay, yeah, I see, that's what I can do. And oh, yeah, that's great. But most people that are invent, and I'm speaking from the heart because I know this, are in career and technical education. They've got to work at it, they've got to learn it, it's a hands-on kind of thing. And that's what he does. And so it's been really cool because with Dr. Meyer there, he was like, hey, why can't we maybe get this program going and try to get some Montgomery County students going to and seeing if they like that line of work? and try to get some Montgomery County students going to and seeing if they like that line of work? Because he was sharing, some of these steam fetters are going out and making $90,000 a year. And, you know, now, this is someone who's interested. But these things are out there, and he's willing to give, and he's willing to participate and help these students get involved. And there are other people out there in career and technical education that are the same way. But it just doesn't seem like we can get, like, we talk about it, but we just aren't. I don't think making students realize that, yeah, you can be something if you wanna go in career and technical education. And you can do well. And you can make some money. And if you don't get rich, you're still gonna make a living, which is more than what you might if you didn't choose the career in technical education path. So that was really exciting to me, and I appreciate you taking the time to do that. So, because that was really, you know, not being an educator, it's hard for me to relay or express to someone how you can hook and link the school system with a, you know, I mean, that's hard to do when you're not in the system. So I appreciate.
All those connections are important.
And I'll say, I appreciate you actually saying that meeting up. And I already talked to Mr. Weaver, and we were already planning buses, and we were gonna take buses from all four high schools to his school, where he teaches this, um, and so we're, we're in the process of making that happen and just getting any kid who, who, um, not kids who are, kids don't know if they're interested.
That's right.
So we're, we're gonna pick all the classes that are, that are related and take them on a field trip during the school day to, um, to his school and to actually look at what, what they do. And, and something else as a result of that meeting that, uh, um, the other day, um, Mr. Pauli and Dr. Graham, myself, we met with, um, the president of New River Valley Community College. And, um, in the process of setting up some additional possible interns, not, um, actual pathways to, in our, um, CC to, um, work in getting our kids to the college during their senior year. And, and some of these trades and some other fields too, that even more technical fields. And, um, because basically what, in our discussion and what we talked about, they offer courses with teachers on their campus. And it is actually more efficient for us to send the students there and actually take them there as a senior during the school day, and possibly us even paying for the student to go there for these certain courses than it is for us to hire a teacher ourselves.
Especially for things like welding and HVAC.
Right, exactly.
And in our smaller schools where these courses are always offered.
And so we've already talked about some careers and some areas that we were gonna possibly do that in next year. You know, of course, funding is something that, you know, we'd have to look at. But in doing the math, it is not a lot of money to actually to send kids there. In fact, we could probably send kids there and they could learn, actually start their path in several different trades for less than it would cost to hire one teacher. I mean, it really would. And so, um, so we're.
I mean, all our high schools can take advantage.
Yes. And all, and it would be all four high schools. We'd bus them, because they've got, they actually have programs, um, that, uh, are, in the technical fields, uh, which is the huge shortage in the state now, uh, where they, they can start those, um, those programs at the, at the mall campus, which is really central to us. I mean, it's right there. And so, uh, what, what we like to do is, is actually, you know, possibly send kids there and let them take two or three courses a semester. And, um, and maybe get a year behind them in their senior year. Because a lot of these kids, all they need their senior year is government and English, and that's it. And, and so why not get them there? And they've already had the courses organized. And so, uh, so we'll be talking more about that as, as, as we move forward. So I'm excited about that. That came from that conversation.
It was a great nation. You know, I have to say, it's, it's kinda like, and no disrespect to any engineers here, because my brother and sister-in-law are engineers, but it's just like that movie, Interstellar, you know? And the, the gentleman, or he's a engineer, and he goes to the school, and his son is not interested in engineering. And the principal at this time told him, he said, you know, we've got all kinds of engineers. We need farmers. And I think, sad to say, the day is going to come, maybe not to the farmer thing, but just, you know, skilled labor.
It's already here.
Yes, it is. And I, and that, and I couldn't help but pull that from that certain movie, because I thought, that is so true. I mean, it might be completely far-fetched, but, but it's a, it's a reality. And I think we have gotten the school systems to see that, yes, it is just as important and successful to go into a trade as to go to college, if that's what you wanna do.
I think he, he actually said he sent welders to, that are in Baltimore right now. They made $190,000 last year.
And his school, he's willing to even teach and certify journeymen, which, I mean, it was just amazing. And he's even willing to put money into the program and scholarships. I mean, we don't have people like this come along very often. And, and you know, it's like, what? But you know, other people that see that may say, wow, that's impressive. I wanna do that too.
Yeah, you never know what it might spread.
Yeah, I'm sure other folks out there, just, you know, the connection and.
We need to highlight his efforts here as a board. We need to recognize that.
Absolutely.
Any other sh, so shares? If not, we are heading to our next item, which is the grant proposal, Project Hope, NRV Homeless Program Continuation. Would you like me to make a motion, or you wanna, do you need to explain anything regarding the grant?
Uh, yes, I wanna go through the grants, if that's okay.
Sure.
Um, yes, first, um, uh, MCPS has been a part of the Project Hope NRV Homeless Program for almost 25 years. This grant will fund the program for an additional three years. We're asking you to approve this grant tonight.
May I have a motion to approve the grant proposal titled Project Hope NRV Homeless Program. Submit.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions regarding the program, regarding the grant? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We approved our grant.
Okay. Uh, since 2013, the state has offered a school security equipment grant this year. MCPS is applying for $100,000 in school security funds to benefit Auburn Elementary, Kips, and Margaret Beeks. This grant is brought to you tonight for your approval.
May I have a motion to approve the grant proposal titled MCPS School Security Equipment Project?
Submit.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Any questions regarding the grant? Not? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We approved.
Okay.
The second grant.
All right. Next is policy updates. Uh, the group of policies before you, uh, is brought for second reading and approval tonight. Uh, please note that Policies 5-3.2 and 2-4.4 are amended to be consistent with the Code of Conduct as you had requested, um, at the last meeting. Also, um, um, Policy 5, uh, dash 7.5 was amended to correct the date and create consistency within the policy. And also, um, Ms. Froggett had concerns, uh, with that policy. And, you know, in, in looking closer at that, that we were, we were not following our own policy, um, as it was written. And, um, I think these changes provide clarification. You know, pretty much what we were doing was, um, when someone would, uh, request an extended, or the leave of absence, um, we would, um, uh, allow, we would hold their job at a specific building, um, for them. And that wasn't even really part of policy in itself. And so, but anyway, I think the change in this policy will, uh, clean it up somewhat. And, um, hopefully we can move forward and be consistent in how we, um, how we approve those requests.
And I appreciate you looking into that and clarifying that, because I knew something wasn't right. It was just hard to get out what was wrong with it.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
May I have a motion to approve the revised policies as presented? Submit.
We need a little discussion.
Before the second?
Oh, I thought somebody seconded.
James seconded. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear. Yeah, yes, discussion, please.
So after attending this conference and hearing about how important our policies may be, um, I'm not gonna vote to approve some policies until we actually, or until I actually am able to devil, into exactly how they may be affecting what we're doing in our school system. Um, because that was a key component to what we heard last week. So, um, some things we have in here may be great, other things we may need to look at. I'm not sure yet.
Any other discussions?
Just to clarify, a lot of these policies are just simply based on legislative changes. Is that correct? How much leeway do we have in changing those?
It, it's, it's policy to policy. Um.
State regulations, so VDOE changes or federal changes like ESSA changes, not legislative changes. You already heard those.
Okay.
I know it's a fine line.
Right. But my question there is, you know, when you have these kind, how much leeway do you really have for changing? If, if it's a regulation, do we have choice?
You know, that, that's part of, uh,
Right.
what this conference was saying was, the system is doing exactly what it's intended to do, so it's not broken. And there are policies, whether they come from the feds or the state or our own, that could be doing, that could be impacting our students. So if we need to lobby to change something, then that's something we need to do, but that doesn't, you know, so.
It's just, it's helpful to know. And I think you had told us before, when we get these, you know, these are mandated. These are yours. You can do something about. These, you're gonna have to lobby to do something about. It's just good to know that as a board member, to have clarification of where we have, where we can have influence.
Maybe in the future it'd be good to.
Right, but we're the appropriate place to have influence.
Maybe in the future what we could do, we could separate those out. Here are the ones that are mandated by either state code, or, or, no, or that type of thing. And then here are the ones that we are, you know, as a school division, recommending that we, um, change. And so maybe we'll separate them out in the future.
And, and that's fine, but.
Go for it.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I think I had written in, uh, last time about my concern about this one, and I've, I've looked at it some more. Sorry, I'm, I'm talking about the one, um, uh, with the, uh, the leave, I guess, Policy, uh, 5-dash-7 dot 5. And, um, I guess one of my, I, I appreciate having a little bit more flexibility to, to replace, um, uh, certain teachers, uh, when they come back. I think that kinda, that helps the district. I think that helps the teacher, uh, be, be able to, or the staff member to be able to take that extended leave. I, I think, um, one area where I thought it was a little bit curious was when it said, uh, the employee will be offered the first position the superintendent considers appropriate. Um, Mark, can you explain why that just isn't, the employee will be offered the first position appropriate? Because I mean, ultimately, it goes through you anyway, but it almost seems like by, by writing in the superintendent here that we're, we're cutting out, um, you know, the principal, HR, and any other process that we already have in place.
Well, I guess, um.
I brought up that concern last time as well.
I mean, it, it's gotta stop with someone. And so, um, Annie, do you wanna come up and say something about that?
I mean, my concern that I voiced last time, I think, is the same as Mr. Chabaka's, is we trust you, that you will make the right decision, but you, you may not always be here. And I guess that's what concerns me.
Go ahead.
Uh, I think the question here is more.
I'm not even saying, I don't even necessarily have a problem with the superintendent being part of this process, but, you know, I, I guess it's just curious to me that it's written this way, that it's singled out as a superintendent, where there might be situations where it would be appropriate for the principal or for someone else and, you know, in, in staff to make that decision.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, ultimately, the superintendent does have that authority anyway, right?
Right, I think, go ahead.
I think, um, it's a semantics question on this. All, all hiring and posting, you know, all position determinations are essentially made by Dr. Meyer. So we, we coordinate with principals and with myself and any other involved, uh, support employees. But essentially, all final decisions are made by Dr. Meyer and then brought to the school board for approval. So he would be involved in any of those processes and would be that final decision. But I don't think it's any different than the rest of our hiring practices, which are, ultimately, Dr. Meyer's the final approval on everything that we do. So the decisions are made by the superintendent and then reinforced by the school board. Yeah. So it would still come through our office. It wouldn't be any different than, um, the normal appointing of employees. Those are through the superintendent as well.
Mr. Baca, did you hear that?
Probably not.
Yes, yeah, I did. Yeah, and I, and I think that's what, what I'm saying, is that it's kinda the same thing, whether it's in there or not. I, I mean, I guess I'm probably okay with it, uh, either way. I'm, I'm happy to go along with the rest of the board on this. But, um, you know, when I first read it, it was a little bit jarring. If I was reading it as a, as an employee, I would almost, you know? I don't know, it would almost, it would give me pause if I was maybe thinking about taking a leave of absence or something. I, um, and I'm sure that it wasn't written with that intent, but, um, anyway, I, I just wanted an explanation on that. Thanks.
Thank you. You were saying something else, Ms. Franklin, before Mr. Chabaka? Regarding the different policies?
Right.
Right, about knowing which we have a choice on and which we don't.
Right. Uh, we have a, we have a choice on all of them, right? Whether we agree with what other folks have done. So, won't take a lot of time with that. It's just, I believe we can have an impact on other folks putting mandates on us, okay?
I think it's also important just to inform the public of where these things are coming from, so they know where they need to advocate, whether it's to us, whether it's to their state legislature, or whether it's to their federal representatives. So I think that, you know, providing that information can't hurt.
You know, it's interesting, I was in a superintendent's, uh, Region Six Superintendent's meeting, um, back in the spring. And I believe there were over, there were over 100 bills proposed for schools. And one superintendent asked, how many of you have been called by a legislator to ask your opinion on these?
Exactly.
And none of, no superintendent in the room had been called by any legislator to ask their opinion on these matters that impact our schools. And so, you know, I encourage our legislators to ask us, um, you know, before they propose the legislation and how it actually affects us. And, um, you know, and luckily, a lot, most of them did not pass. Um, and, and, and to, were to legislators, they would probably be a lot more successful if they did ask us, you know, prior. And, um.
Because they could actually propose things that are really gonna help us, not hinder us.
Right, absolutely. But, uh, yeah, I, I think our opinion, you know, of course, we do go and lobby, but the, the bills are already, you know, on the table at that point.
Yep.
And so, um, yeah.
We may maybe consider changing, uh, the timeframe when we see them, because they were saying actually, summertime, is it a better time to connect it with them? I think they had a timeframe that is much better for us to.
Right, before they propose.
Before they start drafting.
When we go, like you said, November, or whenever we go, February, it's already, you know, they're all, um.
And then we can start doing the reverse. What are you planning to propose?
Yeah, right.
That would affect us.
You know, unfortunately, it, it's, it's not necessarily our folks that are doing it. Um, there are other, lots of legislators from around the state.
Yeah.
And, um, but we, of course, going in, in January allows us to give our legislators our opinions. And, um, as to what we think about some of these things that are sometimes outrageous.
Might be something to propose at your next superintendent meeting, though. We could be ahead of the game.
Sure.
Yeah. So instead of maybe the SBA, instead of having November as, you know, take your legislator to lunch, maybe we need to do that in July or June to start talking to them about what you should propose and things that, you know, they may be hearing through the pipeline that they get our opinion on. Yeah.
Yeah. Good point, too.
That's a good point. Any other discussions on the policies? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Chabaka, did you say anything?
I was an aye in favor of the policy changes.
Okay, thank you.
Did you hear that?
I wanna make sure. Thank you.
Um, next, uh, at our last meeting, the board asked that, uh, MCPS add cultural diversity as a core value in our mission and vision statement. Uh, the policy in front of you provides this change. Tonight, we're asking you to waive the first reading of this policy and approve the change as presented for the start of the school year.
May I have a motion to waive the first reading and approve Policy 1? May I have a motion to waive the first reading and approve policy one dash one point five as presented?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussions, board members?
This, this may not totally, oh, I don't even know the word, make me feel better about what we're doing, but at least it's something, so.
Any others, um, discussions, concerns, questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We add cultural diversity on our core values.
Okay, thank you. Next, the VSBA media, media honor roll recognizes fair and balanced reporting about public schools in Virginia. This rev, resolution nominates Justin Ward and Amen Omira from WDBJ seven as the Montgomery County nominees. The resolution is brought to you to, uh, to you tonight for approval.
May I have a motion to approve the VSBA media honor roll resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussions regarding that?
I'll just say from my, my interactions with these gentlemen, that they have been champion for folks. So, I'm very happy to see this.
Totally agrees. And I've had the same experience with them.
Yes.
Yep. Any others questions, concerns? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We approve the media honor roll.
Okay. Next, I have on our agenda, um, the possibility of adding lacrosse to Blacksburg High School and Christiansburg High School. You know, our, our principals have been in talks with the local lacrosse clubs. And basically, what's happening is this, is, um, we already have those teams as club teams in both of those communities. In fact, they wear uniforms in Christiansburg and Blacksburg that have their school names on those uniforms. And in fact, the boys' teams, in the spring, they have between twenty and twenty-five, uh, boys on those teams at this time. And so, um, the, the problem they're running into by not being a part of the Virginia High School League is, um, other schools that are members of the Virginia High School League are not allowed to, um, play them in a regular season match. They can only scrimmage them, and you can only scrimmage, um, at the, um, at the beginning, really, the beginning of the season. And so, um, so, if you pass these down.
Sure.
And so, to allow our, our teams, which are already formed, to compete in the Virginia High School League, what I, what I would want to do is actually hire coaches that we pay for, um, out of our budget. And we do have the money from, from lapsed funding, um, the, the school year to, to incur that cost. And, um, you know, I've, I've just given you a list of, um, of schools that would be in the conference. And these are schools they can't play now. And, and really, what ends up happening, Blacksburg and Christiansburg ends up playing each other several times during the spring. And, uh, I'm sure they have fun playing each other, but they would like to expand beyond, um, our county. But, um, the, the state does have lacrosse, and I'm, I've given you, they would be in what's called the four A bracket. They would be in the American Conference. The conference we would be in would be competing against these schools that have lacrosse Salem, William Fleming, Williamsburg, Cave Springs, and Hidden Valley. So, we would add two teams to that, to that conference, um, for that sport. And, uh, we do want to add, um, boys and girls. Girls' lacrosse is becoming, um, really big as well in this area, and we would like to, uh, form, um, both teams. We do not think that it will be a hardship on other spring sports, because for one, they're already playing them during the spring. And, um, you know, our spring sports are pretty packed, and, um, you know, sports like soccer, I believe, I was told at Blacksburg High School, they actually cut fifty boys who did not make the team. And so, a lot of those kids are migrating to lacrosse now. And, um, so it's become, um, very popular. And, and just to assure you, too, you know, lacrosse equipment, you know, can be expensive. It, it's, it's a sport somewhat like, um, uh, baseball. You know, baseball players, even for us, most of them buy their own bats. All right? But if we have a player who can't afford to buy the equipment, we're, we're going to make sure that every, every player can, can get what they need to be able to participate in, in that sport. And, and just like any of our athletic teams, unfortunately, we do not fully fund our athletic teams. Folks think we do, but parents put a lot of hard work and effort into fundraising to get our teams what they need. And, um, you know, I certainly do wish we could give our teams everything they need, or, and that's in every friend, just like our teachers who buy classroom supplies every year. It's just no difference, um, you know, because there's a lack of funding. But, um, but, you know, I think it's one more thing that kids, that are already participating in, that they can participate in. And, um, and, and I think we'll be real, real successful in this spring sport. So, what I, what I'd move to do is, uh, is, is go ahead and move on hiring coaches. And when those coaches are hired, they will come to you on a personnel report for your approval. So, that's sort of the approval process for this. I, I just, at this point, need your blessing that when I do bring that to you, you're going to say, okay, it's good to hire that coach. The coach will get paid. One coach's supplement is approximately twenty, two thousand five hundred dollars, which, um, is not much to coach, uh, for three months and hours they put in. That's, that's the same as a soccer coach, is what we would, uh, put them at, and so, uh,
And they'll need it. They'll need it in the
Two thousand five hundred.
Two thousand, yeah, you said
He used to have
Two thousand five hundred.
I'm sorry.
Pretty good, right?
I'm sorry. Two thousand five hundred dollars. Let me be real clear. Two thousand five hundred dollars.
And like, like any other sport, they would have assistant coaches, right?
No, we're not going to start with assistants.
No?
We're going to wait, we're going to wait and see how the sport grows, and if we have to add JV coaches, you know, we, we may do that, you know, next season. We need to, you know, see, you know, and, and we need to, is there a need for JV or not?
No, I meant assistant.
But a lot of those sports have unpaid assistants.
Yes, yes.
I mean,
Absolutely.
Or sometimes I've even seen, and coaches will say, hey, I will give you so much of my
They share it, yeah.
Help, but it's not, most of them don't have.
Right.
Our coaches, what they'll do is they'll share stipends.
Right.
We have that, um, two thousand five hundred dollars that the coach is being paid, and they'll say,
Give you five hundred bucks.
Give five hundred dollars to this person of my salary and, and that kind of thing.
That's pretty normal.
And, um, and so, the, yeah, the two
I guess I didn't mean were we funding assistant
Right.
coaches.
They would have the option. But they usually find that their sales
Yeah, they can, they can have that option to, to do that. And, um, but there's a lot of support. I think most of the, um, I think every player from, every parent from Christiansburg decided to email me this weekend, too, about it. So, and I'm sure they will be considering this, so. So, I think it would be something worthwhile. You can see the list. These are just the four A teams in the state. And so, there are a lot of teams around the state. We would probably, you know, at this time, be the furthest that's southwest in the state. But, um, but it's, it's definitely very popular now. And, uh, you know, it's one more thing to keep our kids involved in something.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And, um, and, and keep them not involved in
Other things.
Other things after school. So, so I guess I'm just want to hear your thoughts.
I think it's a great idea. The more opportunities we can give them, whether they're athletics, arts, uh, clubs, is, is, just broadens the world.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Good.
Next item on our agenda is our unfinished business, board members. Any matters of unfinished business? Any questions regarding solar eclipse that we discussed earlier?
Have any extra glasses?
That's what I was going to say. Do we have any extra glasses? Where can you get them?
We can get them
You can order them online.
We'll give you some glasses.
Okay.
Can we make sure we get the board some, we'll have them at the next meeting.
I think I need glasses.
I said extra.
Yeah.
I want more. I need like Just about where people, I don't know where to get them. I don't mind buying them, I mean.
Yeah.
I tell you what, we can, um, send out something as to where you can actually purchase them.
Yeah. I'll buy them. Expect them for free.
Chad got them at Kroger.
Huh?
Chad got one at Kroger.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, there you go. See, I didn't even know where you could get these.
Little stand, one little stand.
I'm sure people are taking the opportunity to make money.
Should be part of school supplies. That makes your glasses.
And the part of the day are fake funds out there, too.
Oh, okay.
The right ones, yeah, you don't want the wrong.
That's not good.
Yeah, that's not good. I got a, I got a article about it. That was on the news, I think, that some company decided
Is there a way you can tell?
Apparently, there's
It has to be that ISO
ISO, if there's an ISO number, then it is good.
NASA has the rest?
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is new business. Do you have any new business that we would like to bring up? Hearing none. We have announcements and information. One thing I forgot to say, I stopped by the new, uh, teachers', uh, welcoming event this morning. It was so nice to see all those exciting folks out there. It was wonderful, very well organized. And I think, uh, Christiansburg Middle School was very impressive. Instead of, I think the, instead of, uh, Cross Point, having it at Christiansburg Middle School, I think that's a good idea, because it was a good showcase of our very beautiful school. And everybody was like, so impressed. And some teachers may not have a chance to see that school, you know, on a day-to-day basis. So, I think it was nice. And there are a lot of stu, uh, a lot of, uh, new hires that I recognize from our community, uh, dinner. So, I actually made a point and hugged them and said, you know, I'm so glad, you know, you're here. And some of them I recognize from the interviews that I stopped by. So, it was nice. It was a really good crowd. Any other announcements and information?
I probably won't make the kickoff meeting. And I usually try to go for at least thirty minutes or an hour, because it's close when it's at Christiansburg, and I can just go to work real quick. But with it being in Blacksburg, it's just too hard. But I am glad that you guys are getting to have it over there and everybody get to see, you know, it's a great school. But I hope that you will share with people that it's not that, you know, the board members that can't make it, it's not that they don't care. It's just that, you know, we have jobs. So, and Mondays are almost impossible for me to get off. So, I wish everyone the best and the best kickoff year, but I will be there.
Yeah.
And I'll be out of town.
Is it tax-free weekend?
Yes.
It is. Tax-free weekend, last weekend to get school supplies. Good timing.
Sorry, you must get.
Good job there.
The next one is our agenda preparation days. And, you know, that next one will be at Christiansburg High School, next meeting, August fifteen. And, and you see
When are we starting that meeting?
Seven o'clock.
It's at seven, yes. Go at seven. The format of the meeting, and I'd encourage all folks, you know, as many folks in Christiansburg to come out as possible to give input. But what we're going to do is, I'll do the presentation that I did for, for you and the, and the board supervisors, for everyone who was there, just to give an oversight of, of what's going on, an overview. And then we're going to have the different phases of the, um, uh, of the projects and stations around the room, and divide the room up. And then have folks give input on each phase of the project to make sure we hadn't left anything out or any additional thoughts that we need to consider as we're moving forward, and we'll rotate. And then, we're going to do public comment after that. So, if anyone then wants to come and speak to the school board and give comments about what they've heard or their thoughts, um, they can do that after they've had discussions with folks and after they've, uh, moved around the room. So, we'll open the mic up after for just our regular public comment piece on that.
All right. I hope folks will come and attend, because a lot of folks are, um, concerned that we're putting funds into athletic facilities instead of actuals buildings or whatever else that needs may be in the district. And they need to understand why.
Right. Totally agree.
The money savings that we will, that will happen moving like this.
And for me, I find that as soon as I do explain, people have a whole different way of looking at it. They're like, oh, okay, I got it now, or I see, or, you know. So, it's just that matter of explaining why this is, the way it's got to happen this way, so.
Unfortunately, we don't get to talk to everybody.
Well, that's true. Yeah, that's true. But that's the great thing about all of us. We all have a different way of looking at things, you know, so.
And of course, again, the athletic facilities are going to be between four and five million dollars. For four and five million dollars, we can't do any of the other projects.
Right.
Not even come close to the
And that means four or five million dollars we won't have to put in, in borrowing
Yeah.
when we, when we do do the academic part of that.
And it doesn't, you know, give interest if it sits in the bank.
Right.
Or enough, you know, big interest.
And also, one of the things I help educate people with is, just like you said earlier, sports are not completely funded. And sports drive a lot of extracurricular activity interest that keeps students in school. And, you know, that's one of the things that I have helped a lot of the people that have asked me those same questions, you know? I can't count how many students come up here and say, if it weren't for this, I would not still be here. If it weren't for, you know, what is the highlight that you saw in your, you know, high school education? Oh, going to that state football game, or going to that, you know, um, soccer, or whatever it might be, or the, or the track, you know? And it just, or, or arch, whatever it may be. You know, I think sometimes people don't realize, those things drive student success just as much as education can, no disrespect to anyone. But, a- and I think once you explain that, they're like, oh, okay. Plus, if you've got good facilities, you can raise money, which helps the, you know, the spot, the booster programs to help where we don't have to put so much money. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a
All around.
Together, all around, you know, circle
And it's a booster for students to have a facility that they, that are,
Exactly.
you know, up to where they need to be
They're proud of.
And they can be proud of, right. Yeah.
Yep.
Definitely.
You know, there's many a students who I've watched graduate, and I know if it had not been for their involvement in athletics or some other extracurricular activity. Yep.
It just makes, makes a student pool, I think, all around. Next item is our closed session. May I have a motion to go into closed session to discuss four personnel matters, one real estate matter and one student matter as authorized by section two point two dash three seven one, one of Code of Virginia?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are now in closed session.